It's nine o'clock. We'll call the September 4, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting to order. The call will show that all commissioners are present. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
At the Pledge of Allegiance, civil by the United States of America, and in two hundred and forty-eight which stands, one nation, indivisible, without any other conditions or arrangements.
We begin with the Public Access Forum. Do we have anyone here that wishes to speak at the Public Access Forum? Anyone for the Public Access Forum? Anyone? Seeing no one, we'll go to the Consent Agenda. Commissioners, what are your wishes for the Consent Agenda, Item B?
I'll move the Consent Agenda.
Your second? It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify that I...
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. We are up to Item C, Great River Regional Library, Karen.
Morning.
Karen Punzak. Good morning.
Karen Punzak, Executive Director for Great River Regional Library. We thank you for your time this morning. And I have with me, we have Erin Murphy, who's Accounting and Distribution Coordinator, Supervisor. We changed titles last year. At the library, we're here to give you an update on where we're going with the 2019 budget as part of Great River Regional Library's Joint Powers Agreement among the six counties. We have to have our budget set by August 1, and we accomplished that in July. As a reminder, we have thirty-two libraries and GRRL to-go out in Sartell. And here in St. Cloud, we have the largest library as the headquarters. We have nine libraries in Stearns County. About twenty to twenty-five percent of the population has an active library card, which means they've used the card at least once in the last three years to check out books. There's lots of other reasons people use the library, and they don't all have a card. But that's the way we are able to track the number of people. We had over six hundred thousand visits across the nine libraries in the county last year. And you can see our wireless and computer use is fairly high. People also come to the library to attend programs. That's one of our largest areas of business that have been increasing in the past couple of years.
So for the 2019 budget for Stearns County, the overall budget is a 1.28 increase overall. But Stearns County's is a 0.4% decrease, which translates to about ninety-five hundred dollars over 2018. On this table, it shows an aggregate total of all the counties here. And you could see that most of them remain fairly flat with a little bit of a dip in 2019. On the next slide, you can see that there's a slight dip from 2018 to 19, which is at ninety-five hundred. And that is the main reason for that is at the JRL Board meeting back in November, I believe, the Board wanted to increase the ROBSS share that we put into our budget. We had 1.5 million in there, but they wanted it bumped up to 1.6. And another part of that is interest revenue. Interest revenue's been coming in really strong since 2012. Back in 2012, the library had seventeen CDs, and currently, as of 2018, we have twenty-four CDs. And back in 2012, the rates were right around half percent. Now they're around two and a half percent. So the more we budget for interest revenue, the less that the counties have to contribute.
And just a reminder, our factor table that is developed on this is dependent on three parts in our formula. One-third is borrower numbers among each county, one-third is population, and one-third is net tax capacity. So the amount by county fluctuates from year to year, even if the budget's flat. Net tax capacity has been fluctuating quite a bit among the six counties. Wright County is picking up a bigger and bigger proportion of the share in that area. And it also impacts our state funding. So it's been kind of guesswork to figure out where the state funding's coming from. As you can see, seventeen percent of our budget is actually from state funding. And the portion of that formula, twenty-five percent of it, that comes to us is an equalization factor, which is a factor of population and adjusted net tax capacity by county each year. And so we saw a pretty big increase last year, and we're expecting that to be fairly flat. But the metro area's been seeing a big shift away from that equalization factor. Because we have counties like Wright and Sherburne in our mix, we anticipate that we'll also be impacted by that fluctuation in the next couple of years. One of the other things that we've been asked about is how much do we pay compared to the other counties? And if you adjust each funding amount by population and figure out the per capita amount, Stearns County's kind of in the high to middle end of the pack. We actually have a pretty good balancing here in this county among borrower numbers, population, and tax capacity. In a place like Morrison, they have five libraries. And so because they have more libraries per person, they generally have more usership per person as well. One of the other interesting pieces is the total revenue provided for library service. Across the state, the most recent data comes from 2015 IMLS data. And that shows that it costs about thirty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents per capita in the state of Minnesota to deliver library service. If you look at a place like Hennepin County, which is a lot bigger, they're running forty-one libraries compared to our thirty-two. They run around sixty dollars per capita. We're operating at about twenty dollars per capita, even if you include the amounts that the cities provide to maintain the buildings. So that twenty dollars and seventeen cents per capita includes all revenue sources. And it's still coming in at about half of what it costs to run a library in the state of Minnesota. So we want to also highlight one of the major areas of growth in the coming year. We will be doing more fundraising. We actually did a fund development audit this year and created a plan to increase our fundraising by double within the next three to five years. One of the first efforts was to rebrand our High Five Campaign to Locally Grown in March. And that resulted in almost, we went from eleven thousand dollars to twenty-one thousand dollars raised within a month with that new effort. So we expect we'll be doing more of that in the coming years. And we want to thank you for your support. We are looking forward to serving Stearns County residents. Some of the new initiatives coming out of our budget surplus last year will include security upgrades at many of our libraries and a fines forgiveness period in September. From the fifteenth to the twenty-second of September, anyone who comes into the library will have all of their fines waived. So if you know someone who hasn't used the library for a while, September's the best time to come in and sign up for a new library card. It is library card signup month. So we look forward to seeing more people. Any questions?
Mr. Merrick?
I have two. First of all, on your page two, it talks about the visits, wireless connections, computer uses. Is that increasing over time? I mean, if I would look at a graph, could I see that there's a general increase over time? Or is it pretty flat?
The physical computer use is decreasing. Wireless use is increasing. And actually, if you add the two together, that's a total increase over time. So what we're seeing is people coming in who don't have a device are the ones who are using the physical computers or if they need to print. But the wireless usage is actually increasing. And so it's a bit of a challenge for staff, because now you have to be able to answer questions, whether it's an iPad or a Chromebook or a desktop computer, and that may look different in different environments. With the budget surplus, we will also hope to implement wireless printing by 2020 in all of our branches, which should also shift some of that usage, because right now you cannot print from a wireless device in the library.
So it's kind of like online shopping. People do a lot more online than they did at one time?
Yeah.
And the other question is, and I know that Commissioner Lenzamayr is, I believe, on the board over there. Are you looking into cable casting any of your meetings at all, or have you had that discussion?
We've looked at what's technically possible in the building, and it would require some major upgrades from the city of St. Cloud. I think that kind of fizzled out that conversation. We can certainly revisit it if there's a strong interest.
Big push on one of the major emphasis of the Board going forward. And we made a fair amount of adjustments relative to security in the library. It helps, I'm spacing his name, it helps that we have a recovering sheriff on our board.
Oh, yes. Commissioner Kircher from Todd County.
Yeah. And so as a result, the issue of security is much easier to socialize, I guess would be the term, than it was in the past. And, but it's really a marketing issue from at this stage. We've got a fair amount of dubious history to overcome. To make the point, the folks said, hey, security-wise, the library is a different situation than it was in the past. So certainly making progress in that area. In some respects, the steps to take relative to security are really relatively obvious. Is just to make the point to staff, for example, to, gee, you know, maybe once an hour. This'd be good for your health, too. Just get up from your workstation and take a walk around. And just, you know, make eye contact with people that are in the library. If you don't want to, you don't have to greet them, but at least acknowledge that they're there. And for the folks that would have ill intent and makes them sufficiently uncomfortable, they're less likely to do some of the things they would have in the past. And it's important for me, too, that the, you don't think of libraries and marketing in the same breath all the time, but it's important to think of it that way. And without a doubt, the library use has to reflect the changes in society. So the follow-up on the use relative to the changes in technology, that point definitely has merit. But it's more fun to be on that board than when I started. How's that?
Bishop Persky?
First of all, thanks, Karen. I know you've done a great job with the library, and I've been an advocate for quite some time. So I appreciate your efforts. First of all, I want to ask about the eBooks. You know, there was a lot of talk about eBooks and how popular they were becoming. Have they actually been so popular that you've seen a decline in regular materials?
No. And the short answer is, we are still only seeing about seven percent of our total circulation in the eBook collection. It's something we've been talking a lot about, because it's a more expensive collection to deliver per circulation than a physical collection. We did add a new platform last year called Access 360 to help enhance the user experience and get the word out that we have eBooks, because not everybody knows that. We have seen mixed results with that effort. Most of the dollars in that collection came from fundraising. So it's something we can easily shift out of if we need to. But eBooks right now are generally being used by people who are avid readers already. It's just another format, whether they're listening to it or looking at it on their phone. If you're an avid reader, you're probably reading in multiple formats. So...
And then I think, you know, two years ago, maybe people were talking about, you know, that so many people would be switching over to eBooks, that actually hard copy would not be as necessary as we've had it in the past. But we're finding that not to be true.
That's not true. There are some studies coming out showing that retention of reading materials on a device is not as good as reading a physical book. Physical books are a little more portable, and the user experience is still better than most eBook platforms right now. I think some of the challenges is also that publishers are really running how that show works. It's more expensive to buy eBooks for a library than it is for, you know, someone picking it up on Amazon. They also do not release all books in eBook format, so not everything is available as an eBook. And people just haven't switched over the way that it was going, it was predicted to be.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
I mean, there's still movie theaters around, and then, you know, the DVD and the VHS was supposed to take them out as well.
And the battery doesn't go dead in a conventional book.
Right.
I also wanted to add that I think that physical books are more of a personal thing for people, too. And also, I think generations play a big part in, you know, who uses an eBook versus who goes and picks one off of the shelf. So I don't think hardcover books are going anywhere.
And then the same would be true about numbers through the doors. You're still seeing relatively stable or increasing numbers, correct?
Well, they're pretty flat right now, but that's not unexpected. What happens in public libraries are a reflection of the economy. Our usage is in direct proportion to the economic times. So when people are doing well, they're busy, they can afford to go do things. They have a lot less free time if they're laid off. And economic times are tough, they can't afford to have their own device, they can't afford to have their own computers, they can't afford to take their kids to the movies. And so some of the trends we're seeing is because the economy is so strong, people have less free time. One of the things that we're looking at, though, is borrower numbers have declined over time. And that is something we would hope to have seen flatten out. That was one of the goals in our 2015 strategic plan. So we are actually contracting with St. Cloud State Survey Center to do a user/non-user survey this fall to just really dig into the reasons behind why people may not be coming to the library. We expect that some of it may be not so much eBooks, as people's time has been hijacked by smartphones. You're more likely, if you walk into like a dentist's office, to see people scrolling on their phone than picking up a magazine and reading, or sitting next to the next person and talking to each other. And I think that's a big shift in our society that we need to start talking about, because it's really important that people read. Reading is a stress reliever. It helps you learn things. It helps improve your vocabulary. It helps the way that you relate to other people, because you have something in common to talk about. And I think that's something that we'll probably be beefing up efforts in in the next couple of years, because society is sliding a different direction, and I don't know that it's the best direction.
And that's a good advertisement for the first day of school today.
Right. Read a book.
And one last thing is about the wireless. You talked about the number of people coming in using wireless. Now, is that wireless also available, we talked about this at a previous meeting, available in the parking lots? So that people can get wireless if they need wireless?
Yes, to some degree. And we have thirty-two different buildings. So, you know, in our Carnegie Buildings, getting wireless to just go across the building is a bigger challenge, because the buildings were not constructed with electricity to begin with, you know? So I think we are seeing people outside the building, even when it's closed, especially in places where the signal carries a little stronger. We can't guarantee it all the time. But even in our twenty-hour libraries, that's a pretty common thing to see, is people sitting out front the door.
Yeah. And I know that's problematic sometimes, with people at home lose their wireless. And they're panicked, because they've got things that need to get done. And also, we have students that have iPads or iBooks or whatever, and they need to get an assignment or do something and have no place to go. But maybe they just need to run down to the parking lot and get the information they need. So I'm glad that's available.
Right. We were just recently contacted by Apollo High School, too, knowing that they were going to have a lot of kids who wouldn't have wireless access. And while we aren't a food site, we did send, they did send information home about how the Wade Park and St. Cloud wireless services work for those students who don't have Internet access when the school's not in session.
Mr. Merrick?
Thank you. A question that came up when you were here the last time was why someone couldn't apply for a library card from home. And I remember you saying that there were security issues. Has that been addressed?
It's in progress. Right now, we are experimenting with online registration in the library. And so there's a kiosk right now in St. Cloud to see how that works, to see what bugs come up when people enter their own information and it gets populated directly into the system. We're also looking at a vendor that would help us with the identity verification that St. Paul Public Library is using. We haven't figured out yet how that works for us, but it is in progress.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you soon.
We have a public hearing that's scheduled for 9:25, but we can have Environmental Services introduce it, give an overview beforehand. We have Shelley Benson and Angie Berg here from Environmental Services.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
It's on? Okay. Now I can hear it. Usually I can hear it right away. So do we want to do an overview? Okay, so Angie's here. She'll do an overview of the shoreline contractors license issue before the public hearing starts.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Angie Berg with Environmental Services. If you remember back last November, December, we talked about shoreline contractors and whether or not we were going to keep that program. The Board unanimously recommended we keep shoreline licensing. And so that has been in effect for approximately twenty years in Stearns County Ordinance Number 439. We've had three contractors in the last six months who have done work without authorized permits. And therefore, we're bringing all three of them to you today. The Board, at your last meeting, decided to schedule a public hearing for today. The contractors have all been noticed, and I believe are here. Your options today would be to hold the public hearing and decide whether or not to revoke the license, and if so, for how long, or allow the licenses to remain in place. As referenced in packet page thirty-two, the section of the ordinance is listed, which talks about license revocation. I think the last time we brought one of the contractor licenses to you was approximately two years ago. At that time, the Board did hold a hearing and, in essence, gave the contractors a warning. They didn't, you did not at that time decide to revoke a license. So we have today, we have Kramer Trucking and Excavating completed a project on the Stock River, of which the Planning Commission and County Board did authorize the work via conditional use permit. That was this past summer. MC's Lawn and Landscaping completed a rock riprap project on the Stock River Taino Lakes. That was, will be eligible to be issued under a minor shoreline alteration permit. And then we have Backyard Reflections, who completed a retaining wall project on Carnelian Lake. And that one was also able to be issued under a minor shoreline alteration permit. That's all I have, and I did not receive any public testimony for the hearing.
Any questions, Angie? Mr. Notch?
Yeah, good morning. So basically, all of them were eligible to be permitted projects, correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Notch, yes. The MC's Lawn and Landscaping and Backyard Reflections were both allowed to be authorized under a minor. The major alteration permit, that was authorized by way of the Planning Commission and then ultimately the County Board issuing a conditional use permit for that work.
Anyone else?
No, maybe just for public clarification, all contractors that do this work, once a year, apply for a license to do this type of work with the county, correct?
Correct. Yes, and I can expand on that a little bit. We have a license application, and we collect a small fee for the administration. And then we require a bond to be held in place in case there was a project that was beyond fixing or the contractor walked away. We would have a bond to complete that project. None of which we've had to do with these contractors or really anybody. Usually, the property owner and the contractor will fix the work and...
From your introduction here, there are some counties that don't have shoreline licensing?
Mr. Chair, correct.
So that's an option?
Correct.
To not even have that?
Right. Which is why we discussed that with the Board last fall and winter, whether or not it was something that we wanted to continue to do. It is an option.
Do you have any information as to how many counties actually have shoreline licensing and how many do not?
Mr. Chair, I would guess probably under five.
Less than five?
Right.
That require?
That have a licensing program.
That have a licensing program, less than five. Okay, thank you.
Typically, it's the late counties, you know, northern. I believe Douglas County has a licensing program now. So there's few.
Jeff's idea has, I think there's more possibilities there than is readily apparent. At first blush, it might not look like duplication, but maybe licensing and then inspecting the product, inspecting the work. Could that be considered duplication? You know, the point is, is that maybe the licensing doesn't necessarily accomplish what we would hope it would. It does remove the notion or the argument on sight of, well, I didn't know. Well, if you got a license and you passed certain criteria to get the license, yes, you did know. Or you should have known. Or, you know, maybe you're an old guy like me and you damn well forgot. But anyway, the punchline is, is that maybe that has merit. I don't know.
Mr. Chair, one other thing I would add is we do a training every year for the licensed contractors, and they're required to attend once every other year. Last year, we asked the question, do you find this licensing program valuable? And I don't have the numbers or the statistics with me, but they all, the majority believed that it was a benefit to their business to show that they're licensed by Stearns County. And that was one of the reasons the Planning Commission had recommended to the Board to keep the program.
So without the license, they don't work through installations in Stearns County?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Angie, how did we ensure, though, then, without the license there and people just doing work, that, you know, the requirements that the DNR has are being enforced or are being followed?
Mr. Chair, without, Commissioner Persky, without a licensing program, we would rely on the inspection and the permit that's issued, similar to how we do a construction site permit or septic permit.
So what about, what if the work is done prior to getting a permit?
Again, it's, then they would be paying the fees, and there would be no unlicensed contractor fee, and there would be no licensing program. The idea of the licensing program is to educate the contractors to, you know, new erosion and sediment control practices, changes to state law, county ordinance. I send them an email once a year, basically, here are the rules. Here are where you can find the information online related to is a project inside of shoreline, outside of shoreline, introduce new staff to them, topics that the DNR may send out. So I think it's an educational piece for the contractors.
And you're saying most of the contractors then doing that work do support that?
That's what we heard last year.
Any other questions? Anything else as far as the overview? We ready to open the public hearing? We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to comment? If you are wishing a comment, please approach the microphone and give your name and address, please. Anyone wishing?
Hello, Lars here with Backyard Reflections. My name's Marty Helm Street Anadale. We're one of the contractors that, that I guess is on this here. We've done work, we've been licensed in Stearns County for many, many years. We've done work for many years in shorelands all over the state. And I think first and foremost, I just wanted to be upfront with everybody that we weren't trying to go around anything here on this particular project. On this particular project that Stearns County called us on, it was retaining walls off of a house, so our team didn't even, I guess, it totally slipped our mind that we would even needed a shoreline alteration permit for this project we did. Again, it was retaining walls right off of a house and we ended up being two feet, it was two or four feet within the shoreline impact zone because the house was basically over 200 feet from the lake. So, on this particular project that we worked on, it totally slipped our mind, we didn't even think we needed one. Typically, we're always talking to Dave and the, and the county for projects because we do understand we go to the classes and for that. So, I just wanted to state that for this project you guys called us on. So, I don't know if there's any questions you have for me?
Anyone? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? Third call?
Mr. Chair, I would like to hear from the other contractors if they're here.
Jeff Kramer, Kramer Trucking and Excavating. The project we worked on, my understanding was the homeowner had a building permit. I did not verify that. We typically, we do a lot of work in the county, we're licensed, we've always had the license. I personally didn't deal with the license side of it, but last, as of last summer, I've had to, so I'm learning a little bit too. But again, I thought they had the permit, the building permit, which would then allow us to have done that, was my understanding, so...
Mr. Notch?
Can I just ask a question?
Go ahead.
I was going to ask this before too with backyards, but have you found it, and I'm not sure if you attended any of the training?
I did this last winter, yes.
Has that been helpful, do you feel?
Yes, I think it's a good program. As a contractor, I think it's a lot of information, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from MC's Lawn and Landscaping that would like to speak?
Mike Silbernick with MC's Lawn and Landscaping. Our address is P.O. Box 7032, St. Cloud. We did a, some riprap out in Richmond and, I mean, I guess I knew better that I should have had a permit, but we're in a little bay and, I don't know, I guess, I knew better, I knew I should have had a permit. Bottom line is, we didn't get a permit, so, but the projects that we've done this year, we've gotten permits for everything, so, yeah, that was...
So, this one, that one was from when, 2017 then?
Yeah, I think it was probably June or July of 2017, so...
Any questions?
Questions?
For Mike? Mr. Notch?
Same question, I guess, do you attend the training?
Yeah, we attended it last, last winter. We do find it helpful because there's a lot of things that I guess we didn't really know and now we, now we know, so, but yeah, we do find it helpful, so...
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at the public hearing?
The same jurisdiction issue the building permit that issues the septic permit? I mean, is this, is this the reason that there might be, this might be happening where installer comes out and does the work and a building permit is assumed to be there, which, you know, would be a logical conclusion if you're going to spend this kind of money, you would think, I mean, if I'm an installer, I'm going to assume that that's been taken care of, but is there, is that the issue?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Help, yeah.
I think, I think that was the issue with Kramer Trucking and Excavating and Jeff and I've talked about the project and, you know, a lot of times, the, once the construction site permit is issued, then there's a lot that can be done on site without needing a shoreline alteration permit. So, you can dig the footings 20-foot around, you can put your septic in, your driveway in, there's a lot that you can do without needing the separate permit. And so, I think that, you know, and I believe Jeff touched on this, is understanding or believing the homeowner had a permit, well, then everything that was done would have complied. So, and since then, I've had numerous emails and phone calls from, you know, Kramer Trucking and Excavating and, you know, does this permit cover that? Does this permit cover this? Do I need a permit for that? So, I believe that we're, we're on the right path.
Could you address also the backyard reflections thing where they said they were two to four feet too close? Is that to the ordinary high watermark? Just talk about that a little bit.
Sure. Mr. Chair, the retaining wall that is twice the setback would be exempt from needing a permit, so in this case, twice the setback is 200 feet and their project was just short of 200 feet, therefore, the retaining walls needed a minor shoreline alteration permit.
198 feet or something like that, or?
I can look at the drawing to get you the exact dimension. Mr. Chair, the setback that we had measured was 193 feet, so...
193 feet?
Correct.
Anyone else? Is there anyone? Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I was going to just add one more, one more comment is the contractors all did pay the after-the-fact fee, so the permit fee was paid for all projects as was the after-the-fact fee.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak yet? Anyone else at the public hearing wishing to speak? Third call, anyone wishing to speak? Public hearing is closed. Any questions? Commissioner Merrick?
Angie, you talked about something that happened two years ago on a, something similar, did I understand that correctly? There was a public hearing on what was, what was the action at that time?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Merrick, it was laying, trenching out of Avon and they had done some work that was just inside of shoreline, just inside of the 1,000-foot setback area for needing a permit, and the board held a hearing similar as you did today and at that point, decided not to revoke the permit, the license rather, and we haven't had any issues since with, with them.
I'd be in that camp, you know, to handle it similarly as to what happened the other time. I'm not sure about the rest of the...
Yeah, I'd be on board.
So, do we need to take some type of action or?
Mr. Chair, I think it would be appropriate to take action to not revoke the shoreline licenses since we did, then there's an action taken.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Persky?
I do believe we should have just a little bit of discussion on that and truly, I don't want to be punitive and take away their license either. I mean, those people that are doing good work and they understand the rules and they've gone through the training, by all means, I want to make sure that they're the ones that are doing the work that's out there. I want to do say that the Planning Commission has had considerable frustration when these things happen because, you know, they're there and they're trying to make, you know, prudent decisions on what to allow and what not to allow. And they also recognize that there's many homeowners on lakes and on the rivers that actually follow the rules and they're very concerned about, you know, the environmental impact of what their property does to the, to the environment. And those people are playing by the rules and they go and they get the permits and they do what's right, but they get frustrated when they do see people that violate the rules, not only through the contractors, but also just people that outright do the work themselves. And, and we just need to be mindful, be mindful that those rules aren't there to be punitive or to hold people back necessarily from their individual or personal rights or take away their enjoyment, but it is to protect the lakes, to protect the waters and, and also to protect the lake and keeping its character. If somebody goes in and removes all the trees, then we have lakes without trees. And, you know, many people like the natural environment of that, so I'm very much okay with not revoking a license. I also, I appreciate hearing from the contractors that feel that the classes are of value and that also adds some integrity then to their company by doing the work and having that licensure.
Mr. Notch?
Is there anything at the Planning Commission where it's stated that they need a minor or major shoreline permit as well before, or I suppose some of these don't even come to the Planning Commission, do they?
Correct. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Notch, if the project is under a certain threshold, then we issue the permit as a minor shoreline alteration.
So, a major would though, and that's where they could say they need shoreline permit?
Correct. Typically, a major, at the point of a major shoreline alteration permit, they've identified a contractor at that stage and then we would double check to make sure that they're licensed.
Okay.
Anyone else, Commissioner Merrick? Mr. Merrick, could you restate your...
The, the motion is, and I don't know the exact verbiage of it, but it should be similar to what happened, you know, two years ago, not to revoke any licenses there.
That's the motion that's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We are now up to Environmental Services. Item E.
We have item E1, Mr. Chair, that is a discussion of the ordinance related to recreational vehicles. If you remember, we did have a significant number of people come to the, a previous public access forum to discuss this issue and Brenda Tice from the County Attorney's Office is here to go through this item with us.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I offered to come down and explain what, how this, how the changes happened this year and how they were proposed. What we had, what I was told when it was brought up to our office was that this was part of the ordinance for a significant period of time, that we've been having trouble getting compliance with this portion of the ordinance and we, that we needed to find a way to make it more enforceable. Number of letters had been going out to property owners, reminding them that this was part of the, part of the requirements of the ordinance. And I've been told that this is, the requirements are due to the 1973 shoreline rules, which, which limit the lots to having one, one residential structure on each lot. And that's why this, this rule exists. So, with the number of complaints and the letters having gone out and the violations or the complaints being ignored and no enforcement taking place, we proposed some revisions hoping to make this a more enforceable section of the ordinance. And in effect, how the revisions were to work, are to work is it's not an immediate violation. What happens is reports come in from the sheriff to Environmental Services and they would issue a violation and abatement order and that would happen twice before the sheriff would issue a citation. Now, to my knowledge, that hasn't happened yet. I don't know if even any, any violation reports have come out this year, but I do know that the changes to the ordinance went through the hearing process and were approved by the board this spring and the dates, I think Shelley and Angie can give you. I also understand that the, some of the lot owners were here at the last meeting that are actually the ones that are being complained about and the board is asking for some options as to how to deal with this ordinance and the changes that are being proposed. And at this point, the, the changes have not been enforced, nothing has happened under the ordinance other than a fear that they're going to be enforced. The options are to allow the ordinance to remain in effect, to revise the ordinance in some way to make it more acceptable, maybe there are some other revisions that could be considered, or to remove the provision in its entirety. And if you do either of the last two, it's going to require a public hearing and that process before it would take effect.
Mr. Merrick?
Thank you for your explanation. I'm looking at, it's in our packet here and it, I'm looking at 7.22.2 and it says only one recreational vehicle is allowed per parcel. What is the definition of parcel? I mean, a parcel could be a third of an acre or it could be 50 acres and there's a difference there, so is that detailed somewhere?
Mr. Chair, the ordinance defines a parcel just as you described it. It could be a third of an acre, it could be 100 acres.
You know, so that, that makes a huge difference. I mean, if it's a third of an acre, I have a third of an acre in town here and if there's, you know, or if our family farm that's got over 100 acres, that vehicle's on there, that makes a difference, so that needs to be addressed somehow. And I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
Anyone else have any comments? Mr. Persky?
Yeah, I totally agree, Duane. I mean, if somebody has a lake property with small acreage and they bring in four vehicles and they're partying for a week, that's one thing to the neighbors, but if a person has 50 acres and they have their family up over the weekend and, you know, a few people bring it up, they're in violation, but actually, it impacts no one, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I would add, and I think this was touched on at the public access forum, typically, well, all of the time, this is only enforced by complaint. And I indicated to Shelley earlier, I liken it to the vacation home rental that happened about 10 years ago. You know, it was happening and we received complaints. We brought those complaints to the board and I asked the board how you wanted to handle it. At that time, the board said, let's, let's handle it, let's deal with it. So, we enacted standards to allow vacation home rentals as an interim use and we deal with it now by making sure there, there's acceptable water, sewer, parking, the environmental health site does inspections. So, I guess my point is that things like this, if there's, you know, six to 10 RVs on a 100-acre farm over the weekend, we, we don't go looking for these, they're complaint-based and that's how zoning enforcement is done.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So, the property in question where this was taking place, what was the size of that parcel and how many vehicles were there?
Mr. Chair, I would estimate the size of the parcels to be approximately 40,000 square feet. I don't have the plat with me, but they were platted since, they were platted since we had shoreline rules, so the minimum lot size is 40,000, so just under an acre.
And how many vehicles?
Since 2006, we've done inspections on one or both of the parcels in question. There's been anywhere from two to, I believe, eight as of this weekend. There were eight on one of those tracks.
On 40,000 square feet?
Correct.
That's an acre?
Just short.
Just short.
Approximately.
Anyone else? Commissioner Notch?
This is a tough one, you know, because if it's a camper, a lot of times they have their self-contained, you know, gray water, black water, you know, sewage that they probably take with them, so, you know, trying to say, well, okay, on this property, you have to have some kind of, you know, septic or porta potty or something like that, you know, trying to define specific rules for something like this would probably be a little more, little less easy to do probably than, you know, the other issues. You know, I guess I don't have any good... You know, I guess I don't have any good ideas on how you can make this workable for everybody.
Can I help you, Steve?
Sure.
I don't have a solution in terms of this particular matter, but it does come, it does demonstrate every once in a while, we get in a situation where in our attempt to solve one problem, we create another or make the situation worse, and these unanticipated consequences do make, do end up making us look pretty silly, and I guess observably so, but it's, at the same time, it's pretty hard to anticipate every subsequent possible situation. In, in this particular case, if all of this angst is triggered by one particular property, maybe the solution is less about changing the rules, changing an ordinance, changing something like that, and just sending a letter that this, this situation is existing and it's, it's not consistent with other uses in the immediate area, and asking them to do something about it. If they don't do something about it, well, that's how it goes, but I think most lake owners or most property owners appreciate an element of domestic tranquility, so I'd like to see us take maybe a soft-touch approach. It's, is there a way, and long run, is there a way that we can build a carrot type of motivation into this as opposed to a stick? I don't know. I would hope that that's a possibility.
I do know, Commissioners, that letters did go out from Environmental Services, and in fact, one of the properties received a stop work order, which is one of the provisions allowed under the ordinance, and they had no effect on the situation, and that's really what led to the need to change the enforcement provisions. So I just want to point that out, and I also want to point out that it does, the current proposed amendment, or not a proposed amendment, the amendment that's in effect allows for two violation reports and abatement orders before any citation would be issued. So I don't know if that, if you want more, what you're, what you're proposing or suggesting.
Just to tag onto that, is that in a 12-month period, or over what timeframe?
I don't think there's...
It's really not specific.
It's not specific as to that. I would assume that after, based on the way it's written, my understanding is that they would get two violation and abatement orders, and then after that, they would start getting citations.
Because the issue I always see is, you can have one property owner that might have two or three RVs, travel trailers on their property, and they're all set up really nice and it looks really nice, and nobody has a problem with it, and then you go to the next one where they might have two or three, and you, you can't even find a blade of grass because there's so much stuff, you know, on the property, you know, which obviously is more detrimental to the neighbors than probably the one who does a nice job and everybody is okay with it. But I don't, I guess I don't want to carry the big stick either. I, you know, you'd hope the neighbors could actually get along and everybody live in harmony, but we know that doesn't always happen, so.
Commissioner Merrick?
Yeah, following up on what Commissioner Notch said, you know, if it's, if it's two or three vehicles on a 40,000-acre parcel, and it's once or twice a year is one thing. If it's eight of those vehicles every weekend all summer long, and then it turns into kind of a rental, that's another, and I don't know where kind of, you know, an individual has a right to his property, but when you, when you infringe on other people's property, then that becomes an issue. And I don't think anybody has the magic solution to this. I would hope also that neighbors could work together, and I don't know if anybody's tried reaching out, you know, to the individual that's doing the complaint or to these other folks. I don't have an answer.
Mr. Persky?
I was going to have a similar comment. It's, seems to be an issue of good neighbors, and I don't know how do we legislate or put an ordinance in to be a good neighbor. A lot of it comes down to respect. You know, if, if I've got family that I'd like to have up to the lake and, you know, we can bring them up and they, you know, they behave themselves and we enjoy ourselves, I guess I see no problem with that. But if you have, you know, several, you know, campers and tents and all that, you know, there, and you're having a bonfire and you're going to the wee hours of night and you're playing loud music and you're, you know, doing a lot of rowdy activity, that's irritating to the neighbors. But again, like the same token, if, if you're, you know, being quiet and having a good family time, I see no problem with that. So it's, it's tough to regulate that because, you know, being a good neighbor and respect our things, we just hope people have it within themselves.
Commissioner Merrick?
I'm wondering if Brenda or Environmental Services, I mean, hearing what we've said and listening to the folks, this whole issue, do you have any thoughts, any, any recommendations or?
Mr. Chair, my, my recommendations, I think what I'm hearing from you is that you might want to see something changed. The, the ordinance is in place, as Brenda indicated, the way it currently is written. And so if you don't like that, if you don't like the fact that there could be citations issued to some of these folks after two have occurred, two abatement orders have occurred, then I think that you need to consider directing this back, issue back to the Planning Commission. I've written down nine standards, if you will, that I've heard you all talk about, you know, size of parcel, sewage, number of days, notification to neighbors, parking, noise, quiet hours, impervious saw coverage, rental, distance from neighboring homes. You know, those could all be built in as a standard, but having said all those things, I don't know that the, the two properties we're dealing with are going to meet, may meet what you come up with. So it could still be this, you could be back here in another six months with the same issue.
Well, you know, it would be a starting point. I mean, if, if we, if we tried to do something and had a public hearing, get input from everyone, from the Planning Commission, from all the property owners, at least there's a starting point, that we can hear what everybody has to say, and, and just keep plugging along in the meantime, but if we put a process in motion and try to be as transparent as we can, the board's concerns, the residents' concerns, the concerns of the complainants, whatever the Planning Commission has, let's hear what everybody has to say.
Commissioner, anything else?
No, I think that would be a starting point.
So that's the direction we're going to give the Environmental Services then?
Well, that would be, I mean, this is what I'm kind of hearing. Otherwise, we could be talking about this forever.
We'll bring this issue to the Planning Commission for discussion. I mean, Labor Day's over, there aren't any popular holidays coming up. We, we don't plan on issuing any citations under the ordinance as of now. I could see that we would be able to handle this issue by next spring.
Yeah, and I guess I would, whatever process we use, I would encourage you to keep the, the neighbors informed, let them know what's happening when a public hearing is, sharing everything with them, you know, with, with everyone.
If the, if the citations are in, there should be, there be a time limit on there? In other words, there's one now and one 20 years from now that might have a little different bearing? Because I didn't hear a time limit on there.
I wrote timeframe.
Okay, timeframe. Mr. Persky?
Yeah, there's one other item. Is there an issue here between the number of recreational vehicles on a parcel according to its size is one issue, but then another issue would be maybe even just disturbing the peace as far as music, fires, rowdiness, things like that?
How do you control that?
Exactly, but...
That's probably a different ordinance.
Right, but that is complaint-driven too. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're up to Environmental Services, item two. Becky Schlar?
We just keep Brenda here, just...
Okay.
Whatever.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Becky Schlar, Environmental Services, Ag and Water Resources Division Supervisor, and before you is item E2, the first of two items that I have, and it is to approve the plan for the North Fork Crow River Watershed One, Watershed One Plan Project. The county board has supported and been involved with this since March of 2014, and the public, the plan was released to the public for comment earlier this year, and the Bowser, the Board of Water and Soil Resources, approved the plan on June 27th, and now it's the county board or each of the political entities involved with the project that need to approve the plan in order to access the state funds for the implementation of the plan. And Sue McGuire was our water planner, she retired, and we now have Cole Lowen as our water planner. He does come to us from a really good background of water planning with the watershed district, so I'll let him go ahead and give you the background on the plan.
Thanks. Good morning, Mr. Chair, and the board.
Good morning.
So I'm going to keep it very brief, understanding that you have a full agenda for the rest of your day here. Just a quick reminder of why we have One Watershed One Plan. You'll recall, a couple of years ago, Jason Wienerman was here from the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources to kind of discuss the history. Basically, since about 1937, when the Soil Conservation Law and the first Soil and Water Conservation District was formed in the state, we've had multiple renditions of watershed planning throughout the state. One of those was in 1987, that resulted in the County Comprehensive Water Management Program, also known as the county's water plan. Due to this history, there's a myriad of water resource plans that often overlap, results in duplication of efforts from a planning perspective. The state legislature recognized this, so in 2012, they granted the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources the authority to develop a united, unified planning program. That came to be known as One Watershed One Plan. By 2025, the goal is the entire state to be covered or in progress on a One Watershed One Plan. In Stearns County, that will ultimately mean there'll be four of these. The one before you is the first one at the stage where the county board can give final approval, is known as the North Fork Crow River One Watershed One Plan. In the county, there's two planning regions that cover Stearns. It would be the Lake Coronas North Fork Crow River and then the Middle Fork Crow River. At the same time, both of those planning areas are actually covered by a watershed district, so North Fork Crow River Watershed District and Middle Fork Crow River Watershed District. The planning is made up of multiple entities. You've got the Crow River Organization of Water, you have six counties, six soil and water conservation districts, and two watershed districts. So during the development of the plan, a comprehensive list of potential resource concerns was created. It utilized existing reports, data, as well as stakeholder input. From that, using a multiple survey process, the concerns were prioritized into five levels, A through E. From that list, it was further winnowed down to 13 concerns, divided into categories A through C. Those are the focus of the plan. The highest priority is drinking water, groundwater, lakes, agricultural drainage systems, and surface runoff. From that process, goals were established for each of the 13 priority concerns. Focus is given to the A-level priorities, recognizing that addressing the priorities in the A level will have a trickle-down effect to the B and C level, they overlap. So example, if you are addressing phosphorus pollution in lakes, that is oftentimes going to trickle down into our streams since they are generally interconnected throughout the county. A target implementation schedule based on the previously noted planning regions was developed to guide implementation over a 10-year period. Some highlights of that is, we are prioritizing in the North Fork, drinking water supply management areas to address nitrate leaching issues. We are prioritizing the reduction of phosphorus loading to lakes to protect and restore these waters, limiting the spread of aquatic invasive species, reducing runoff by .5 inches of runoff death on average watershed-wide. That's just a fancy way to say we need more storage on the landscape to slow down the volume of runoff heading downstream. And then we are increasing the soil organic matter, 40% in cropland areas where that current organic matter content is greater than 1%, but are less than 4%. The goal that is to improve soil health, provide value-added benefits to the landowners, and minimize pollutant exportation from those lands. So just a quick overview, since the last time this was before the board, March 13th, 2018, Board of Water and Soil Resources has approved the plan, the policy committee has approved a new memorandum of agreement to guide implementation going forward, and local staff is working out strategies to begin plan execution. So there are two items of action needed before the board, and the first is to accept the North Fork, North Fork Crow River One Watershed One Plan, and I'm happy to entertain any questions the board has.
Any questions? Commissioner Notch?
I'm going to ask one, which, you know, it's kind of after-the-fact thought here, but, you know, when it comes to your, your priority level A, B, and C's, you know, one that isn't specifically stated, but I would have a question on, you know, a lot of our local municipalities are small, and, you know, have lagoons or, you know, areas where their sewage flows into and then it's treated and then eventually discharged. Are, have those standards been changed at all over the last 20 years to maybe, maybe there's a change in what's in those ponds, but they're using acceptable discharge levels of certain things from 20 years ago, and, you know, those haven't been addressed or updated or changed?
So Commissioner Notch, Mr. Chair, standards do change over time. Cities are usually under the authority of, I believe it would be the Pollution Control Agency, and when those standards do change, pardon me, the state has recognized that a lot of times these smaller municipalities do not have the funding resources to comply with the new standards. That's part of the reason the Public Facilities Authority exists, to offer grant and loan programs to upgrade the small communal sanitary facilities to comply with those new standards, and oftentimes they have a very lengthy schedule to allow them to build those funds. So there's a recognition, and small municipalities do, as part of the budgeting process, bake that in over time to make those capital improvements necessary to comply with the new standards.
Okay, because I know that, you know, obviously discharge it to public waterways or drainage systems, so...
Yep.
Could you restate what you're looking for here, Cole?
Yep, so the first action item we're looking for, Mr. Chair, is to accept the North Fork Crow River One Watershed One Plan.
Do we have any sort of motion?
I'll move it.
Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
And then, Mr. Chair, item E3 is to approve the North Fork Crow River One Watershed One Plan Memorandum of Cooperative Agreement. As you might recall, we did have a memorandum of agreement for the planning stage, and now this agreement, which is actually titled memorandum of cooperative agreement, is for the implementation of this plan that you just approved. And Brenda Tice from the County Attorney's Office has been involved with reviewing it and does not have any substantial concerns, and so we would be looking for your motion to approve it as well as to confirm the appointment of Commissioner Mergon on that policy committee.
Do we have such a motion?
So move.
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are in line for a break, so we will take a five-minute break.
I have a whole laundry list of accomplishments over the years. I won't go into details, but I just wanted to mention names so you can see that we are reaching out to all the areas within Stearns County, not just focused on the ones close to the St. Cloud area. Granite Tops in Rockville, Cold Spring Granite in Cold Spring, Polar Tank Trailer in Pol and Holdingford, Bayer Built in Belgrade, Wells Concrete in Albany, Felling Trailers in Sock Center, New Flyer in St. Cloud, Mid Soda Manufacturing in Avon, Tom Crammer Inc. in Cold Spring. These are just a few of the businesses that the HRA has offered assistance to throughout the year, usually in the form of zero interest or very low interest loans or tax exempt bonds. Most recently, I've been working on a toolbox where I'm meeting with city administrators throughout the county. I had my first meeting with the city of Melrose last week. All these cities in Stearns County are struggling to have workforce housing built within their community. And the reason why they're struggling is they can't find a developer that's willing to build a multifamily project in their community. So my role is to connect the dots. What resources can I bring to these cities to help them entice a developer to build a multifamily project in their city? You know, Melrose with the expansion of Jenny O., Belgrade is screaming for workforce housing, Bayer Built, and the city of Bruton reached out to us recently. I meet with them on October 2nd. They are looking for senior independent living. Again, developers aren't willing to go into these small cities and build a 12, 24, even a 36-unit multifamily project because they just can't make it pencil. So what can I do? What can the HRA do to connect the dots and bring the resources to the table in order for them to entice the developer? That's all I have for you this morning, and I am available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Commissioner Merrick?
As the board rep, do you have any comments?
The one thing I would ask Neil is, I think I may have brought it up at the last meeting, is have you done anything in working with the GSDC, Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation? Because I've met with them, and they've indicated that they'd be willing to work toward helping out outside of St. Cloud.
Right. They will be working with us. We will be working with them with the city of Bruton. That'll be our first time where we will be meeting with them along with them. And then also the small SCDP, I'm sorry, still relatively new to the job, Barry Kircoff, working with his group, they're helping, working together on the city of Bruton and Belgrade as well. So we will be working with those agencies to try to bring workforce housing to these smaller communities.
Thank you. And Neil has made some very positive changes since he's been on board. He's been putting in some time above and beyond.
With that, I'll move approval of the recommended action, which is to adopt the 2018 resolution.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, it's not fair to pick on him since he's so new, but God, it's such a, it's so pregnant with possibilities, I can't help myself. Yeah, there's, again, I mean, it goes back to my basic contention is that I think this is duplication. There's, the vast majority of what happens with the county HRA is things that could be done on the municipal level. He rattled off a laundry list of projects I've been involved in. All of them have been in cities. Cities have the opportunity to do these types of things on their own. Exhibit A is White Park. White Park is going back decades, has even, has used their, have used the tools that are articulated here on a case-by-case contract basis with independent contractors. But bottom line is, I have, I haven't been particularly successful in making this case. And it is $400,000, and we do, you know, other than saying no every time we, in December, when we adopt a budget for the subsequent year, there are operational things that we can do through the year, if indeed that's your goal. But hey, I, the experience for me has developed an appreciation for St. John the Baptist, the voice crying in the wilderness. So I guess next time I go to confession, I can tell the priest, hey, I've already done my penance.
Any other comments? Otherwise, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The roll call?
Commissioner Landmeyer?
Nay.
Commissioner Knott?
Aye.
Commissioner Persky?
Aye.
Commissioner Merrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Passes?
Motion passes, four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. At this time, we'll recess the regular county board meeting to conduct the Human Services Board meeting, and we have Melissa Huberty here along with Julie Ellis. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. My name is Melissa Huberty. I'm the Human Services Administrator, and I have with me today Julie Ellis, who's the Division Director of Community Supports in the Human Services Department. And we have one consent item on the agenda today, which is on G1 on page 82. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Do we have a motion on the consent item?
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item one under H.
All right, thank you. We have two items on our regular board items today. On page 84, there are H1 and H2. The first one is a proclamation for National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month, and with the board's permission, I'd just like to read that, to raise awareness and support for behavioral health conditions in families and communities who are struggling with these issues. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention efforts of mental and substance use disorders are successful, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation. And whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance use disorders to implement preventing measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in needs to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas, an estimated 1,397 people in Stearns County have received treatment for these conditions in the past year. And whereas, to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and Stearns County, Minnesota, invite all residents of Stearns County, Minnesota, to participate in National Recovery Month. And now therefore be resolved, the Stearns County Human Services Board proclaiming that the month of September 2018 is National Recovery Month.
Mr. Chair, a move approval of the recommended action? Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two.
All right. With that, we thought it would also be an appropriate time to update the board on substance use disorder reform, which is a number of measures that are changing over the next few years, and will have a number of county impacts. And so with that, I'm going to have Ms. Ellis give you an overview of both what that means and also how it will impact the county over the next couple of years.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Board Chair.
Good morning.
Chair members. So substance use disorder is the new terminology for what most of us might think of chemical dependency. So with the reform comes always new language that we're using. And why was the reform needed? SUD reform efforts support the transformation of Minnesota's SUD treatment system from acute episodic care to a longitudinal model of care. The reform permits SUD to be treated and managed like other chronic health conditions, with access to the right level of service at the right time in the right setting. So the reform actually redefines addiction treatment, and it takes steps in the direction of integrating addiction treatment into the larger healthcare system. So this effort has been going on for about five years, as you'll see with the timeline. It started back in 2013. There was a little bit of work done in 2012, but the first legislative report was in 2013. There were some pilots that actually piloted the direct access approach and the care coordination and peer recovery support. You're going to hear more about that in the presentation. But that was also done in 2013 and 14. In 2015 and 16, there were listening sessions conducted in the communities, and what DHS has indicated, they mostly heard the trends were that people could not get into treatment fast enough. The wait lists were too long, and we as a state needed to fix that problem. There was a core policy work group and a core fiscal group, work group in 2016, and in 2017, the reform was included in the governor's budget, and ultimately in 2017, the SUD reform was passed in that legislative session. So bringing us up to today, in May of this year, DHS submitted a state plan amendment to the Center for Medicare and Medicaid, or CMS, outlining the SUD reform strategies for Minnesota. And that was approved on August 14th, and that means the services that I'm going to talk to you about today will now be medical assistance billable. So the current process that we use is called a Rule 25. Some of you might have heard of this process. We've been under this waiver for a number of years. And under the current process, the placing authority, which could be the county, it could be a tribe, or it could be a managed care organization, authorizes the treatment placement. So a Rule 25 assessor actually does an assessment, and they authorize the level of care that they feel is appropriate based on that assessment. It's very focused on chemical dependency and the authorization piece. How that's changing, so for the future, the individual will go directly to programs to have the assessment done and treatment. The assessment's going to look a little bit different. It will be comprehensive. It will be a mental health and substance use disorder assessment, which makes a lot of sense. The other big change is they'll have direct access to service. So while the recommendation might be made in the assessment, they will have the option to downgrade the service. Much like if you go to the doctor now and he recommends surgery, you might say, I want to do these other things first. So that's part of the anticipated success of the reform, is that people will have choice in their treatment. So we have a two-year transition, which actually started July 1st, which didn't actually start until August 14th, when CMS approved the waiver. So there'll be a parallel process during that two-year timeframe, where we'll have the Rule 25 assessment process and the comprehensive assessment process. And that will be statewide, not just Stearns County. So people can go to a provider, or they can come to the county for their assessment. We're expecting that as we get into the process and providers are a little more comfortable, we'll be seeing fewer and fewer Rule 25s and more comprehensive assessments. The other changes that we expect for the county's role is that we'll still be required to do those assessments for the next year and a half. We won't be able to bill medical assistance for them. The comprehensive assessments that are done by providers will be billed to medical assistance. Providers are more likely to do the comprehensive assessment and bill for it and make placement decisions rather than sending people back to us to have a Rule 25 done. We'll still have to determine financial eligibility for people who are accessing the Consolidated Chemical Dependency Treatment Fund, and we need to work out what that's going to look like. The county financial responsibility has to be determined as well. Individuals should be able to choose their provider and the type of care they're willing to engage in, similar to other healthcare services. So this aligns substance use disorder along with other health benefits. Counties can choose to become eligible vendors for comprehensive assessments and treatment coordination. We're not looking at doing the comprehensive assessment piece because the licensing criteria is pretty high, and it's more than what we're willing to do. We also believe that we'll have adequate providers who are willing to provide them in the community. We are exploring the opportunity to provide treatment coordination, which will be an MA billable service. So treatment coordination will happen from the point that somebody might go to detox all the way through their recovery the rest of their life. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, but it's kind of getting people connected with the right services and making sure they stay connected. So peer support services are a new service. It's a new addition to the addiction treatment workforce, and it will require careful implementation. The peer support specialists must be certified through a recovery care organization, and they'll be supervised by those organizations as well. They will be required to be in recovery themselves for at least a year from either addiction or a mental health condition. The peer support services are available to medical assistance under SUD reform. Counties are not eligible vendors, and that, we again feel that we're going to have adequate providers that will be providing this service. So we do not anticipate that to be a problem. Withdrawal management, aka detox, is what most of us know this as. I do like the new verbiage a whole lot better. And this is really a big move. I just want to point out the difference with withdrawal management and everything else I've talked to up to this point. This change does not occur until next July. So this is a little bit futuristic, but it's very interesting for you to know how it fits into the whole continuum of care. So historically, detox centers have served as a public safety, public health function with the emphasis on public safety. Reform will transfer these services to serve primarily a healthcare function and better connect people to longer-term health and social services. Again, these services are going to be billable to Medicaid, and there will be two levels, both clinically managed and medically managed levels of detox. And these providers are going to be required to have the full continuum of care, all the way from comprehensive assessments to peer support recovery services. So it's really going to be that huge look at care instead of two days in detox and people leave. So that's a lot of information. I apologize. There's a lot of questions that we don't know, but just to summarize, I kind of put this grid together to kind of give you a snapshot of what this really looks like. So currently, we have a county assessment that people experience, and the future it will be done by a provider. Right now, the county places people, basically tells people, this is the type of care you need, these are the places that have openings. In the future, individuals are going to access those services directly, and they will have a choice whether they have residential care or outpatient treatment. Right now, we have no treatment coordination, which is one of the reasons we think people cycle in and out of treatment so often. When that is provided, and once we get those things in order, we're thinking that people will stay healthier, stay in recovery longer, and those services will be MA billable. Currently, we don't have any peer support. From what we've heard about peer support in other areas, specifically the mental health area, this is very successful. People relate well to others who have been through the same experiences that they are in. So those in the future are going to be services that are medical assistance billable as well. And then looking forward to next July, what we have right now are detox services, and we use all county levy dollars to pay for those. In the future, we will have withdrawal management that will be billable to medical assistance, provided people are eligible for medical assistance.
Any questions?
Mr. Merrick?
Yeah, the county levy dollars, what is that dollar amount in, like for 2018 or 2018 budgeted? Do we have a ballpark?
Yeah, I think we're right around $300,000.
$300,000, so that would be a savings to the county?
Yes.
Thank you.
Not completely, though. You know, I wouldn't want to mislead you, and we still will need to pay for some of those services for the people who are not MA eligible or not eligible for the Consolidate Treatment Fund.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're going to now close the Human Services Board and reconvene the regular county board meeting. So we are up to item I, administration. We have Mike Williams and Steve Hamis, Randy, and I don't see Sarah.
I thought we were going to electronic versions.
We had the library presentation this morning, so we're going to book form. No eBooks.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair Commissioners.
Good morning.
As the chair said, I have Assistant Administrator Steve here, and Autor Treasurer Randy, and Finance Director Sarah. And this is your budget committee, and so I want to thank them for all their work they did putting this preliminary budget together. And in addition, the leadership team has, of course, worked hard, and their staff has worked hard on this, too. You already got a little taste of it at your last board meeting, where we talked mostly about performance measures, and certainly our good staff here in the county worked hard on those, too. Much of the information that you have, that you're going to see here in this presentation, was included in the summary that I provided in the board packet, and is also in another format that was just handed out to you. So you really have this information in a number of different ways, but we will run through the budget, so you have a chance to hear it from us. And as you know, we are, we start this process even as early as late in April, but in May, we're interacting with the leadership team and getting us to the point where we're making these presentations and answering your questions in August and September. And then, as you know, in September, you are required as a board to adopt the preliminary levy, which then will lead us into the truth and taxation hearing, at which time in December you would need to adopt a final budget. When you adopt the preliminary levy at your next meeting, that would be the maximum amount that we can levy for 2019, and we could reduce it by the end of the year, but we would not be able to increase that. You helped, all of you have helped develop this mission of exceptional public services for a safe, healthy, vibrant county for all, and also the county's new values, which we have been working hard to cascade throughout the organization. Every new employee gets a little information about this. I actually try to attend all of the orientations myself, but we're cascading them into the organization in many other ways as well. You saw it throughout the performance measures. We've used it in this budget process. It's part of job descriptions, evaluations, it's part of all of our training. So hopefully, we are becoming a county staff that's professional, approachable, responsive, collaborative, and fair and equitable. And we're going to see some more training measures coming out, too. Some of our thoughts about the budget as we approached it was, of course, to prepare a budget that's acceptable to the county board, keep the tax rate at a reasonable level, and is something that is sustainable into the future. Couple other things that we did, and you've already done as a board, you reviewed one-third of the fees for this year. Last year, as you remember, we did mostly environmental services fees, and this year we did another portion. Another financial piece of this was to continue to monitor the appropriations to the outside agencies, and you'll see that there's a few agencies that are not part of what we would consider mandated or maybe even core responsibilities, and we've shown a reduction in those appropriations, much like we did with, what was it, seven or eight or nine human services organizations in 17 and 18. As far as infrastructure, as you know, we have the sales tax revenue. This is the first year collecting that for our Highway Capital Improvement Plan, and we're seeing that that is considerably higher than what we originally projected, even as much as half a million dollars more than annually than we projected. Also, the new sales tax on internet sales could have a positive impact on our collections there, so we may have a chance in the future to revisit that capital plan and put even more dollars into our roads. As you know, we spent a fair amount of time on technology in the, oh, I missed one thing. The expansion is, of course, going on now, and we'll finish that project next year of the West Side Service Center, and then we'll turn our attention to remodeling this building. In the area of technology, broadband is one area there, and we've recently visited with a number of our providers throughout the county, and they're trying to focus on some ways that might be good candidates for some state grant money, if and when the legislator approves the border-to-border grants again. You'll also remember, we approved a technology strategic plan in, earlier this year, the board approved that. You will get a report from George McClure probably in September on how we're progressing on that technology plan. We continue to increase some funding in the technology area here. Organizational, you're going to see a couple of people dedicated to child protection in the human services area. You're going to see in this budget that we have a couple of people, budgeted additional people in the county attorney's office as a result of implementing the study that was completed last year. We have a human resources staff member proposed in this budget to coordinate all training and learning activities for our employees, and perhaps maybe even in conjunction with some of the other local government jurisdictions throughout the county. It's not, one of the other priorities of the board was to transition the recorder from an elected office to an appointed office, and you approved this morning a contract to conduct that study, begin that later in the year. In addition, we have some dollars, I think it was like $131,000 set aside in the budget that would fund, if there's some recommendations in the Autor Treasurer's office as a result of the study that you approved this morning, too. So you have the overall expenditures, what was requested. We, as a budget team here, reduced what was proposed by department directors by just over $2 million, and that translates to about $2.8 million that we reduced in what was requested on the levy. Just so you get a feel for what was requested and what has not been proposed with this Just so you get a feel for what was requested and what has not been proposed with this budget, the preliminary budget here. We have a number of changes in funding. We have a little increase in County Program Aid, about $265,000. As you saw in the, if you looked at the summary of the Human Services Revenue, you'll see there is some gain there in that gain of about $800,000, which is about 3% of the Human Services revenues. And then we have a slight increase in fees. But then we have a myriad of areas where we think that our revenues are going to go down. So we have a net decrease in non-levy revenue. Which all translates with those expenditures and revenues into a proposed levy of $80,479,000, which is a 3.79% increase over last year's levy. We, it's interesting to me, we look at this slide every year, and it seems like county levies are impacted very similarly throughout the state. We've typically been a little below the average of this group. I'm seeing or hearing from other counties that most of them are, I think, going to be over 4% this year. So we may be even as high as 4.5%. We'll see how that all plays out. In a couple of weeks, we'll be able to share the actual, what's proposed budgets and what's adopted. But I think we're going to be a little below the average again this year. Couple of major things, and I think you've already heard about a couple of these. But we have a legislative change that is really a shift of responsibility to the counties that we're going to want to, need to pay careful attention to in the next legislative session. It means probably upwards of $250,000 of costs that could be shifted to the county if the state legislator doesn't pick up that, the cost for children placed in Real 5 Residential Treatment. There was a lot of talk about that at last year's session, but it didn't get passed. So it's a chunk of money there that we may or may not have to use by the time the legislator is over. And then, as I suggested, you're going to see two additional employees in child protection to keep up with the dramatic increases in that area, of the caseloads in that area and the reports of maltreatment. And I'm going to be quiet for a minute, and Steve's going to walk through a little bit more of the detail.
All right. Good morning Commissioners, Mr. Chair. As Mike pointed out, we've had several requests in the personnel area for this year. It's just under 14 FTEs total across the county, throughout Human Services, the Attorney's Office, the Auditors. Again, we worked with departments to try to bring in as low of a budget and a personnel request as possible. If we'd approved, if we'd recommended all the positions that were requested, we'd be looking at $750,000. And we were not able to justify that for 2019. So at this point, as Mike indicated earlier, we are delaying all of the requests from the Auditor's Office and the Recorder's Office, looking at, again, what may happen from any studies that take place over the next several months, similar to what we did with the Sheriff and the Attorneys, in terms of not approving positions for those departments. As Mike indicated, we do have some money in the budget set aside. So in case that the study would recommend a position to take place during 2019, we have some way to be able to accommodate that. For facilities, we are only recommending half of the requested increase. So that's only going to be 0.2 of an FTE. Other than that 0.2 in facilities, the recommended positions at this point in time, as Mike indicated, the training position in HR with the large turnover we've had in generations that we've talked about in past Board Meetings and the 30% turnover management, there is just a larger need for training and development with our staff as we have over 900 folks on staff at this point in time. I will point out that this was a study recommendation in 1992, back when we had a study done way back then. And so we're finally taking that off of the table. The Attorney's Positions are, again, ones that were recommended as part of the staffing study for the Attorney's Office that the Board approved. And then in Human Services, as Mike indicated, there's three positions. Two are directly related to child protection and one is to the Sex Offender Program. There is some outside reimbursements that'll take for a portion of those positions, but certainly won't cover all of the costs associated with those. But again, they have done much better with their Random Moments and other things, so that should also help in offsetting some of the costs. Looking at the larger picture in terms of the very large breakdowns of the budget, you can see that Personnel, we're looking at about a 4% increase. Services is a 2% increase. Much of that is through the Transportation Construction Program for Highway. Supplies are looking to be lower in 2019. Capital Outlay, it's a $200,000 increase. And that is, we have been trying to get our technology purchases up to where they were prior to the recession. Due to the recession, we did a major drop or reduction in terms of how much we spent per year on technology upgrades. And we've been slowly trying to increase that about $200,000 a year. And we're one more year until we hit where we were prior to the recession. Overall, again, expenses will be going up 3.32% based on this recommendation. Here's a list of the outside agencies that we currently still fund. As Mike indicated, we talked to a few of them about reducing the amounts that they would be seeing for 2019. That included the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation, the Downtown Council, the St. Cloud Convention and Visitors Bureau, and the Tri-County Humane Society. And so they have all seen reductions from what they received last year as well as what they requested for 2019. The History Society came in with no net increase in their request for 2019. Soil and Water, who is our second-largest outside agency, was just a $10,000 increase off of last year's budget. And most everyone else is flat. The Library, of course, is a joint powers agency, as is the Crow River Watershed and the Central Minnesota Regional Radio Board. And so those requests, again, we just pass along as part of the joint powers agreement with those agencies. In terms of other budget pieces, the Capital Improvement Plan, we indicated earlier that the major project is the expansion and remodeling of the Service Center. However, there is one other project that is a new project for 2019 that's on the docket, and that is to redo the Richmond Shop Parking Lot. We've been trying to get one or more of those parking lots redone over the last couple of years, and it's Richmond's turn next year. It's a relatively small project for only about $60,000. In terms of technology projects, I just wanted to highlight some of the major improvements that we're looking at for next year. There's a quarter million dollars in terms of network enhancements, in terms of the servers and switches that we have to operate the backbone of our infrastructure. $200,000 for digital services, that's app development, website upgrades, and technology like that. And then there's $230,000 in there for a phone system upgrade. You know, our systems are showing their age, and we are looking at moving from analog to a fully digital system. Next slide looks at the Road Construction Program and where that money's coming from. I'm not going to go through every single one of these line items. I do want to point out that the Transportation Sales Tax, that $7.6 million, that's the amount of money that we expect to make next year from the sales tax. And it's also carryover from money that we're earning this year that we haven't spent, as this is just the first year of getting that money. And so we haven't gotten all those projects in the door to spend it. So it's programmed to spend the money in 2019. And then we are going to be using some of the Project Fund, which is a fund that we established for one-time capital or large costs. And we're going to be buying a box truck to help with the Service Center expansion and to do changing how we operate both buildings downtown and out west. And so Facilities is going to need a box truck to help keep them going forward. The Sheriff is looking at having a sonar unit, and they are hoping to have some donations and some off non-county dollars to help support that purchase. But we do have some money set aside in the Project Fund to help take up that cost. And then the rest of it is all the Dispatch Center. We need to add another backup control station, that's the actual hardware for the Dispatch Center. And then an upgrade to the software. The vendor we currently have says the system is at the end of its life, and we need to do a major software upgrade. And so that's about a $700,000 ticket item. And then I will turn it over to Sarah Randy.
That Project Fund also has a balance in it, about $5.5 million as of the end of 2018. That's what we're projecting the balance to be. So as you may recall, the Project Fund is not levy dollars. That was some money that was set aside years ago when the county was unsure if they'd receive their County Program Aid. They set that money into that Project Fund, and now we're drawing down on that. So we wanted to mention that it'd be about $5.5 million balance, and we're looking to draw down about another $878,000 of that without levy dollar impact on that. Moving to fund balances, this slide here is a snapshot in time. It talks about your fund balance for all budgeted funds as of December 31, 2017, so the last full year-end that the county had. And then it's looking at that as a percentage of 2018 budgeted expenses. So when you roll all those budgeted funds together, you come up with a 47% of fund balances of expenses in fund balance, which is a financial stability measure. That kind of helps you see, if we don't have revenues coming in, how much of our annual expenses can we cover with existing reserves? 47% is pretty measurable to where it was a year prior to that. When I look at each of the funds individually, the only fund that's below that recommended 35% to 50% is Human Services. All the other funds individually are above that 35% threshold that the county policy and the state recommends to have on hand. This slide here talks about the county tax rates. And Randy is going to talk about the implications to the property type shortly. This graph mirrors what you have on your Packet Page 93, so similar information there. And then as far as where that $80,479 levy would go, you can see that per this slide, about 82% of that would go between the General Fund and the Human Services Funds of the county. With that, I'll turn it over to Randy to talk about some of the tax base information.
Our tax base, again, for payable 2019 is seeing some nice growth. The new construction's at $179 million. Last year's at $183 million, and both those were the highest that we've seen. Previous to that, they've normally been in that $100 to $130 million amount, so that's been, that's pretty healthy growth. Utility properties are up $3.5 million. There has been some late, they gave us some preliminary numbers, and last week they gave us some additional numbers, so that this number may go down a little bit, and I know Jeff is working on that in the Assessor's Office. We have just over $9 million in decertification of TIF districts. So when a TIF district decertifies, those revenues are captured to pay for those projects in that TIF district. When they get decertified, then all that tax base is available for taxation for counties and the other jurisdictions. So the total tax base increase is about $192 million. That's about 1.6% of our tax capacity. And the taxes, if you calculated on that new growth, would be the 1.2 million, which is about 41% of the proposed increase we're looking at. If you want to go to the next slide. Our tax rate decreased this year by 2.63%. So this slide is to show the effect of that. This is assuming no increase in market value for properties. But the main purpose of this slide is to show what is the effect of the tax rate decrease, which would be the 2.63% to everybody. This slide goes over what the average change in market value was for our major property types. Again, with the 3.79% increase, what would be the change in the county's taxes? In Homestead, I'll go through it a little bit more in the following slide. But Agricultural Cultural Homestead saw about a half percent increase. And on average, they're going to see about a 2% decrease in their county taxes. Commercial Industrial saw almost a 5% increase on average in market value. And they'll see an increase of around 2.6% depending on their size. Seasonal Recreational saw about a 5% increase in market value, and they'll see about 2.25% increase in county taxes. So this is on average again. And the Homestead Properties, a little bit more difficult to understand, so we did a separate slide on that. So there's three things that change, three factors that come into effect that cause their change. One is a change in the tax rate, which is the levy, and that's the first column in the red. So as their property goes up, they still see a reduction because of our tax rate went down. They see an increase then because of their market value went up, just like everybody else. But with Homestead Properties, they have Homestead Exclusion. And as their property value goes up, they lose that Homestead Exclusion. So that's the third column there. The county changed due to loss of Homestead Exclusion. So it causes an additional increase in their taxes. That's why their percents are always higher, because as their property value goes up, they lose that Homestead Exclusion. That's all I have. I think I'll turn it over to Mike for final comments.
Just a couple of things looking ahead. As you know, and we talked about all our union agreements needing to be renegotiated in the coming months. And so we talked with you about that at your last meeting. So those costs are really unknown, and so we can't really project where we're going to be in 2020 for those costs either. And as we said, we will continue to implement the County Attorney's staffing recommendations. So there'll be two more positions in 2020. Also related to our Pay and Benefits Plan, we'll be looking at a health insurance renewal. So we'll be out looking for proposals for health insurance for our employees in 2019. This year is an election year, 2020 will be another election year. That means we have a spike in costs for election. In the 2018 budget, we had $337,000, I believe, for elections. And so, you know, next year, that's not near that number, but again, in 2020, it'll go back up. Also, as I said, I think we're going to be collecting quite a bit more in our sales tax dedicated to highway construction. And so we may be having a conversation about that Capital Improvements Plan. And of course, we're always subject to changes by our state and federal governments on the many mandates that we provide for them. So the preliminary budget recommendation is summarized there. We do have a proposed increase in expenditures of 3.3%, which causes the levy to go up nearly 3.8%. We do have a nice, as Randy said, increase in the market value. So the tax rate at this preliminary, this proposed preliminary, would go down by 2.6%. Also, as you know, we have a couple of steps left here. We hope that you can adopt a preliminary levy and budget on September 18th. And then we'll hold the Truth and Taxation Hearing at the end of November. And then at one of your meetings in December, you would need to approve a final budget for 2019. So there's no action necessary today, other than hopefully develop somewhat of an understanding of where we're trying to take this budget. And we can answer any questions you might have of us.
Mr. Mayor.
I have to have a, I'm going to prepare a list like I do every year of questions that I have, but I'm not going to go through those right now. But along with what I'm going to send you, I'd like for you to prepare something, and I don't know the format, but maybe of five items or so in priority order that you cut out of the budget, because you said, "We just don't have the money for that." So whatever those top five items would be, and the impact that they would have if they were added, and possible sources of revenue to offset that. You understand what I'm, okay, thank you. And then I'll, and I'll put a little bit of that with my notes, but I have other ones here also. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad you guys understand. I don't. You want to flush that out a little bit, Dwayne?
I want to flush it out, yeah, things that were cut out of the budget.
Explain your request, that's all, to me, you know, because apparently, well, you know, I guess, looking at the range of compensation sitting at that table, clearly they're superior to anything I could bring to the operation.
I've talked to them before this. And what I'm looking for is items that could potentially be in the budget, that they have cut out of the budget in their preparation. Items that would be of benefit to the county, to its residents, or to the county as a whole. And if we added those, what would the cost be, and are there revenues to offset that? Kind of the pros and cons to adding items like that. I think, at least Mike and Steve, I think, understand where I'm. And I'll put that in writing, too.
I do.
And if you don't understand, give me a call, or send me a note.
I'll try it with staff first.
Okay.
And maybe they can enlighten me since we're spending the afternoon with at least one of them.
Anyone else?
I'm going to ambush Steve here with a question. Steve, what would, it's probably, it's different for different categories of financial institutions, but what is what you call an industry standard for operating reserves for a quote-unquote typical bank, even though there is no such thing?
Honestly, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah?
Not, I mean, if you look at how a bank's loan to deposits go, you know, technically, you want to be less than 100%. Obviously, you loaned out all the money that you've taken in. Deposits are liabilities.
Yeah.
But, you know, in essence, you're probably more apt to be 90, low 90%. You know, loan to deposits would be a good number. Be on the high side, but it'd be a good number. But other than that, I couldn't tell you as far as reserve for operating.
We used to, back when I was sleeping with a banker, we used to have these kinds of discussions, believe it or not. I'm still sleeping with the same person, she's no longer a banker. The point is, is that back in the day, relative to operating reserves for our operation, the 35% to 50% of reserves for various budget categories, my point is, it's an arbitrary number. And it's driven by, primarily by the state auditor. And I have asked in the past, "What's this based on?" And the response I get, I'm making this real simple. And the response I get, and I'm making this real simple, is that's because it's what we say is needed. And based on what? Well, it's because we say that's what's needed. Point is, is that, in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, the...I think that's really...I think it's nearly excessive. You're talking about an entity with the power of taxation, and we need operating reserves in that category, you know, in that dimension. So it's just an observation. Randy?
There's a couple of funds that are in there that are bringing that number up. One is our debt service fund. It's at 115%. That got...we try to keep a level of debt service, and that got raised a little bit with the sock rabbits bridge. But that's something that, as we move forward and looking at the net next bond, we'll be dealing with that debt service fund. The other one is the solid waste fund, which is over 400% of...so that's a really big one. So those kind of bring it back up a little bit higher than it should be.
Mr. Persky?
Steve is...he's got a comment.
I was just going to tag on to Randy's comment to indicate that the number of the state auditor sets may not have the specificity that, you know, people may like, but it's also a snapshot in time, as Sarah pointed out, that that was taken at the end of December, when we were relatively flush with money after just getting in all the property tax for the second half of the year. And, you know, that money then carries us through until we get the next infusion of cash in May. And so if you were to look at that number in April, it's going to be a very different number. And so it's a matter of, you know, what point do you take the picture, is what you're going to see. For the state auditor's perspective, they want the picture taken at the end of December because it's the end of the fiscal year. But that's not necessarily an operational standpoint, when it would make the most sense to take the picture. So we need to take that...excuse me, take that into account as well.
We need to have cash flow, basically. But the other...just one last point on that, and I agree, it's an arbitrary number, but we can calculate kind of what we need for...
Yeah.
To get through the year. This budget, you saw the...we call it the project fund, but it's...that's really using fund balance. You've got almost $900,000 recommended to use of fund balance, which, you know, the state auditor is going to roll that number, I think, into the general calculation.
It is, yes.
So we are planning to use some fund balance.
Maybe a better comparison on reserves might be insurance companies, because they know they're going to have losses, so what's their anticipated reserve to accommodate that on an annual basis? But Steve brings up, brings to my memory, an interesting point. There used to be a state senator from western Stearns County that used to look at these peaks and valleys of our budget reserves for counties in general, Stearns County specifically. And he used to pick the number at that very highest point, which, you know, generally correspondence corresponds with property tax payment deadlines, and would point out to his colleagues that, "Look, counties have all of this money. Why are we spending all of this to benefit them?" Never really acknowledging that he's taking advantage of the situation by pointing this out, because that doesn't reflect reality, and we got to the year-ends thing. But, yeah, I think relative to what we have for our budget reserves, punchline is, is it's really flush. Jeez.
We all remember the...it was 10 years ago that local governments were unallotted with their CPA and other state monies, and so it's also for emergency purposes.
I've served long enough to have been here when twice, once under...two governors, once under Ventura and once under Palenti, where we had something called unallocations. And they're really the only area that, you know, we can cut, what we learned through that, in, say, a 30-day notice, is highway spending. But, yeah, punchline is, is relative to reserves, or...and I have an answer for that, you know? Are you going to change state auditor's mind? That's pretty optimistic.
Mr. Persky?
I just, looking forward to 2020, just with a little bit of optimism, perhaps. With Costco coming on, the hotels coming on, also the apartments that are growing, and the home development, do we look for an increase in tax base, actually? I mean, is that something we see, or do we project that those will be relatively normal as far as growth amounts?
It's something I can talk to Jeff about, but, yeah, you know, all those additions help out, and they're all part of new construction, and the last two years has been very good, so that tax base has been healthy.
Okay. I would agree with that, with the exception of single-family development. Single-family is a very benefited tax class, homestead especially, and it consumes more than it contributes.
I want to change directions here a little bit. On page 91 of our packet, because we're often told that it's difficult to fill vacancies as far as hiring, and on page 91, it says, "The human resources department processes 4,000 job applications to fill 122 vacancies."
If you recall at the last meeting for performance measures, that was one of the performance measures for human services, was the number of applications that are processed. We have, in the past couple of years, filled 160, 150, and this year, on track for about 130, 140 positions to be filled. But there are certain areas where, you know, we have difficulty in recruiting. As you may remember, there are, I think, 10 to 12 current openings in the jail. We have openings for social workers statewide, and again, it's not specifically here. It's an issue of finding people to want to work in some of these fields anywhere in the state, be it working in jails, working in child protection, social work, IT jobs.
So of those 4,000 applicants, very few of them can be pushed in those directions?
Well, they have to want to apply for the job, and so, you know, you may have...
4,000 have applied.
4,000 for all the jobs. So you may have 200 apply for a clerical job, but you may have 10 apply for a job in the sheriff's office, or 20 that apply for the highway. They, you know, they have to want to apply, they have to, you know, go through the process and get weeded out. So it's not as if, you know, everyone who applies is wanting to work in any job that happens to be at the county.
Is an effort made to talk to these people and say, "Hey, where you've applied, we really don't have an opening, but would you be okay with considering something where we need someone?"
I think that in some cases, that does happen. I've heard of it in some cases, but I can't speak to every single recruitment that we do.
Is there also another situation that might be a part of that non-hiring is, are sometimes the requirements, and I know oftentimes it's just thrown out there, you need a four-year college degree, is sometimes those requirements really above what's really needed to do the job?
Our staffing, our classification consultant, Mr. Kelsey, who's working on our three-year rotation of looking at all the jobs, he's the one who rated all the jobs 10 years ago, and we use his recommendations for what the jobs are listed at for the mini-qual's. Departments have their input. All the clerk...all the classifications that are under review, all the employees put down there what they think is required for the job. So it's not as if administration or HR dictate what those mini-qual's are. It's lots of different inputs. In terms of, is the qualifications too high? I would say that where we were 20, 30 years ago to now, we have fewer clerical jobs today than we did 20, 30 years ago, because more of our jobs are becoming more specialized and more professional. We have more social workers than we did 20 years ago. We have more mapping techs that require degrees than we did 20 years ago. It's just the nature of the way the business world works. IT jobs are that same way as well.
How much of an effort is really made to redirect people? Well, we've got 4,000 applicants, I'm thinking we should be able to redirect people, some of them, because obviously they're looking for a job.
Yeah, and I can't speak to every recruitment. I have seen it done on certain cases, but I can't speak to, you know, the entire recruitment process. I'd have to just talk that over with Jennifer and have her get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
There are barriers to accomplish what I'm going to suggest, because it's an old idea, so it's not...it's nothing that came to me in a dream. But we have a lot of boomers out there that are, you know, are retired, skilled, skilled people, and if there was a way to incorporate some of that expertise on a part-time basis, that would be a significant benefit. There are a variety of regulatory roadblocks, should we call them, or prohibitions, to doing just that, and because there's, you know, there's real possibilities to doing that. And how do I prove that? Well, if you look at the number of retirees that wind up in consulting services, there's a bunch of them. And I'm sure that some of them, if part-time was a possibility, would be willing to look at that. Yeah, I was reminded this at a recent wake for a well-known former county employee, that gee, when you're hiring a county administrator, why did you make a master's degree a minimum requirement? And the question was asked by an individual who was otherwise pretty well-qualified by an experience level, and we also at the time had an interior applicant, but I'm sure, you know, without that, we wouldn't...the outcome would have been the same.
Thank you. We'll see you in September.
Yes, we will.
Later September.
Later.
Let's go. Issues by commissioners, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Commissioner Lenzmeyer's not paying attention in class.
[laughing]
Mr. Notch.
Well, just to kind of, you know, go off of what Commissioner Lenzmeyer had asked earlier about banking, you know, if you look, one thing that, you know, banks are required to have is capital, minimum capital reserves. But, you know, if you look at the banking world, it's probably a little different, because you have FDIC, or, you know, these agencies can come in, if you fall below that and you're undercapitalized, get a capital call, you know, and I think the minimum threshold's like an 8% ratio. But when you look at that, I think it's a little different, because if the county would fall below and not be able to pay the bills, you know, who's their backup? You know, in a banking world, FDIC can come in, close you down, take it over, assign another lending institution or financial institution to run it in the interim, whereas I don't know if government has something like that.
If you've got the power of taxation, it pretty much answers the question.
The thing is, can you...you can't do it immediately.
Well, no. So you do short-term borrowing, cover the shortfall, and make it up.
I suppose you could.
Jeez.
Mr. Persky?
I have...
Today's interest rates, we'd do pretty well doing that.
I have nothing other than a heads-up with school starting. You know, people should be aware of the buses that are now around in the morning and after school, and watch the crosswalks, and make sure you're safe out there.
Mr. Merrick?
I have nothing.
Dr. Williams?
A bus should be out frontier pretty quickly for our trip to the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Otherwise, this meeting is adjourned to travel to the Midwest Medical Examiner's Office.
That's where I was trying to get to, Steve. That's where I was trying to get to, Steve.